Evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, July 2, 2019. I'd like to call the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves now for the record by standing and stating their name and address. Is anyone recording this evening? Seeing none, Counselor Fleming, would you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschemerik.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donley.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselor. I'd like to address 194-19, the annual report from the Pittsburgh Police Department. It gives me great pleasure this evening to present to you the annual report for the Pittsburgh Police Department for 2018. I'd like to go on record by thanking the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department for their hard work, diligence to duty this past year. They did some outstanding work, which is reflected within the 50 pages of this annual report. Couple things I would like to point out to the councilors that really jumped off the scope this year to us were some of the reductions we saw in some of our criminal statistics. Part 1 crimes in the city of Pittsburgh from 2017 to 2018 was a reduction of 27 percent. Over a five-year average, the city of Pittsburgh has witnessed a 41 percent reduction in Part 1 crimes. That is astonishing when you think about the numbers of crimes. Additionally, not just Part 1 crimes, but crime, property crimes have seen a significant reduction in the city as well. Burglaries, I'm proud to report this year burglaries are at their lowest level we've seen in 17 years. There's a 37 percent reduction in burglaries. What you're seeing in Pittsburgh is you're seeing that across the state, however, but not to this magnitude. The reductions we're really seeing in our criminal activity in Part 1 crimes is astonishing. After reviewing all this data, you know, you have to ask yourself, you're really going to look at it optimistically and say, you know, the numbers can only go so far. And you have to look at reasons why you're doing, why your crime statistics are going down this way. You know, I look at it in many different ways. And within this report, you're going to see the amount of efforts we put towards training in the police department, the efforts we put towards community engagement, community involvement. We're looking for different ways to service the community, and I think it's reflective in our crime statistics. This is a large document. There's 50 pages of significant historic and statistical data. I gave each councilor this evening a colored copy. Please take time, go through it. I think there's some great information in there, whether you're talking about citation counts, accident, accident intersections, you know, how many motor vehicle accidents we have in any given area of the city, talks about arrest data, talks about complaints against police officers, talks about quite a bit of different things. And at the end of it, it talks about the amount of grants that we're managing within the city. This is a significant document to put together. I would personally like to thank Kristy Fisher, my crime analysis, for hard work she put into this. But the efforts you see in this report are a team effort, right from our entire civilian staff to our 911 dispatches. It really is a team, community effort. And you know what? And the one partner that I'd like to thank more importantly is the community and the people of Pittsburgh, because these numbers are reflective of us working as a police department with the community. So I hope you enjoy this report. If any councilor has questions regarding this report, feel free to call my office, stop by my office. I'll go through every page with you individually and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So councilors, this is public forum. Normally, I wouldn't do this, but it is an item on the agenda which wouldn't have gone to a committee. So if councilors did want to speak or ask questions of the chief, I'll permit it at this time. Let's hit Counselor Dina Tally.
Chief, is there, is, this is probably a general question. When I read these statistics, I, my thought is, what are we doing to promote these statistics? Because the biggest problem in this city is a perception problem, that we're an unsafe community.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that the crimes consistently have dropped in the last four to five years. I mean, this is something we should be putting on billboards, we should be putting in the paper, we should be having press conferences on. What are we doing as a city? And then again, general question, what are we doing as a city to promote these statistics? Because social media doesn't help this city. The news doesn't care about good news. What are we going to do to promote this? Because when I see this, this is reality, and what happens outside of here is not reality. So what are we going to do to highlight these statistics?
That's a fabulous question, Counselor. And I answer that in my cover letter to this report. While it's encouraging to see the statistical drop in crimes, we have to reevaluate, and we've been doing that pretty successfully the last three, four years, reevaluate how we police our citizens, how we police the community, and switch the way we're policing. And you're seeing that change through my community engagement office, where our offices are becoming much more accessible. I mean, Jeff Howe and his group of men and women that work for him in that engagement unit, they're all throughout the city. And when you have that type of trust and understanding with the people from the city, good things happen. And you're seeing that, and it's been reflective in our report. In the last month and a half, working with the mayor's office, I have done a significant increase in uniform presence downtown. I had the support of Mayor Dina Tally. And this last month and a half, my calls from service downtown, which are not reflective in this, have been drastically reduced. You know, I've had business owners calling me, thanking me, seeing what they're seeing. So we're reevaluating how we police, and it's little things like that with the presence they're seeing on Main Street. And also, it goes a long way when you have the support of the mayor's office and the city council. So, you know, we're constantly reevaluating, Counselor.
And I know, I know it's a snapshot, and I know that the trend could go the other way, or it could go up a little bit, or I understand that, but it's been consistently going down over four or five years. And we should take a victory lap right now. Just take what we can get, since we're always beaten to a pulp, you know, about this city itself. So, I mean, maybe it's for the mayor's office, or I just would love to see a promotion of this report as much as we can, because we love to be negative and trash this city left and right. This is something we should be proud of, and we should emphasize to everybody we can.
We are probably the most transparent community in Northwestern County when it comes to our crime statistics and crime data. I've had meteor outlets banging on my door, wanting to get this information. Out of respect to this body here, I refuse to give it until you see it first. So no meteor outlet has seen this report. Tomorrow, this report will go on the city's webpage, and this will become news for whoever wants to see it. Yes, it's, this is exciting news, but in my business, we have to be optimistically cautious, because tomorrow, things could change drastically.
Absolutely.
And we need to stay focused on the mission, and that's to have a safe community that everybody can enjoy.
Yeah, we shouldn't rest on our laurels, but we should certainly emphasize all of the positives, and these trends are phenomenal. And that's why I'm, when I see this, I just want to do all we can to promote it. And while putting a bumper sticker at the bottom saying, "We're cautiously optimistic moving forward, but these trends could change," but right now, they're going in the right direction.
They are.
So we should, we should celebrate that. And that's, that's all I wanted to say. So thank you to you and your staff. And, you know, when people see statistics like this, some people have said to me in the past, "Well, do we need more staff if the statistics are going down?" I said, "Well, you can make an argument that more staff is the reason why the statistics go down, coupled with the use of the resources that you have, how you spread out those resources." So, again, we shouldn't rest with this. We should see next year this go even further down, and I know that's the goal of your office. So I thank you, and I thank the staff, and I thank the city. And I just, I'm going to do all I can on my end to promote this as much as I can, and I'm sure the rest of us will too. But that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
I just want to say, again, thank you to you and the team. It is a team effort, and you are certainly a superb example of how to lead this team of officers that are under your command. So I appreciate that, every year, every day, every hour, that you are keeping our community not only safe, but you are battling against the odds that, you know, the powers that be like to put us down for. So I appreciate the numbers and statistics, again, even if it's just for one day, we're doing something right. So I want to continue with that and praise all of your team for keeping us safe and sound at times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I'll, I'll add to the praise. Tremendous job by you and your department, yet again. You know, I think it's reinforcing what we already know, which is that, you know, you and your entire department take pride in the work that you do. You love the community that you work in, and it shows. And it's good to see the statistical data to back it up. You know, this, this is exciting, and we should celebrate. And there are those, you know, whose neighborhoods haven't, haven't hit the point that we wanted to hit yet, and, you know, we'll be turning our attention to you, and we haven't forgotten you, and the attention is still focused on those neighborhoods. I know that, you know, because, Chief, you're talking to me about it every week, about how you're deploying resources to the areas that need it the most in the city. And, you know, so, so, you know, I look forward to more, to more optimism in the future of, you know, where you can redeploy resources as, as you make progress throughout the city. And this is yet again, you know, consecutive years of you coming before us of, you know, of these, you know, important and relevant statistical areas that have continued to go down year after year. So tremendous job, and I hope, I know that you said you're always cautiously optimistic, but please do, please do let the entire department know that the council applauds and praises the work that you do each and every day. And so I think, I think we should give you a standing ovation for the work that you've done this year.
You know, and I can't say this enough, that the truly unsung hero within this report are the people themselves here in the city of Pittsburgh. There's, there's no way 79 sworn police officers can do this alone. And if it wasn't for the people of this city that have teamed up with us to make this a better city, none of this would be possible.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I have one other item, that's why I wasn't.
(laughing).
Motion to place the police department annual report on clerk at the city clerk's office.
I have a motion and second to place 194-19 on file with the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to address number 200-19. I would respectfully request the opportunity to take this as suspension of the rules.
Motion for suspension of the rules on 200-19?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 200-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The matter is before you.
Motion to approve.
Oh, good, yes.
Yeah, 200-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 200-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Calvin Brooks. I'm city auditor for the city of Pittsburgh, and I'm here to ask for suspension of the rules on orders number 195-19, 196-19, and 197-19.
Motion for suspension on those three orders?
Second.
I have a motion and second, find it, same, same motion. Fine to take all three?
Sure.
Together. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 195, 6, and 7-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Motion to approve the three orders?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 195 up to and including 197-19. Speaking on the motion?
Mr. President.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
Just to explain, that these are three motions that are entirely involving just departmental transfers that have to get done before July 15th.
Correct.
To clear the book, cover the, to close the books on fiscal year 19.
Thank you, Counselor Dina Tally. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Brooks. Public forum, is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Owen from New View Communities, 470 Main Street.
Rebecca Wright from the Pittsburgh Art Museum, 185 Elm Street.
So we were here two weeks ago, so just, we had a whole bunch of folks with us also a couple of weeks ago, but just to repeat what we said then, we're speaking on matter 076-19, the Smart Growth District, that we're, I'm supportive of that, New View is supportive of that for a couple of reasons. First, it will really help downtown. It will help create economic development as we allow more residential development down there. Second, it's really important for the Pittsburgh arts community. This is the method that we've used to try to, to get this zoning approved. We had a bunch of different choices, and we thought this was the best one, both because it had the biggest impact on downtown and also because it generates additional revenue that the city can use as it sees fit. And we're hoping that the city will take that money that's generated by this and put it back into Low Park to help make that park be a great park.
And I am reading a statement from Nick Capasso, our director, who couldn't be here tonight, and he was sorry not to be here, but he sent me this, along with this statement. "On behalf of the administration and trustees of the Pittsburgh Art Museum, I would like to express our full support for the Pittsburgh Smart Growth Overlay District, which is vital to the continued progress of the Pittsburgh arts community. You all know the merits of the project. The city council has worked in partnership for over five years with the art museum, New View Communities, the Pittsburgh Plan, the Reimagine North of Main Project, and the mayor's office towards the realization of this vital economic and community development initiative. Together, we have all invested in considerable amounts of time, staff capacity, and money to restore three historic buildings, stabilize a neighborhood, increase the tax rolls, and bring new life to downtown. We respectfully ask the city council to approve the Smart Growth Overlay District. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public forum at this time? Seeing none, turn to the agenda. If there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following single matter of a new appointment for the Commissioner of Public Works, a city engineer, term to expire July 3, 2022, for Mr. Nicholas H. Bossanetto.
Motion to accept Appointments Committee report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I just want to tell Mr. Nicholas, there, that the most important ward of the city is Ward 2. So take care of my ward. That's all I ask. I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but you're in my ward now, so I'll take you for a tour.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I actually have a couple of questions for the appointee.
Counselor, I won't be permitting questions at this time. We did a public forum under the, under the Appointments Committee.
Okay.
So I just want to be consistent. But if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak?
I just want to, okay, well, he's here, but he, my, I eagerly support the, enthusiastically support the appointment. I would just hope that the DPW utilized the See Click Fix app a lot more than it is currently being utilized. The, the system is a great tool in terms of recording all of the items that are necessary. The problem I have with its utilization right now is the tickets that are submitted are not closed when they're finished. So I would just hope that the, the app is used 100 percent, where when the job is done, close the ticket, so I and the residents know it was completed. And I would also like to submit through you, Mr. President, to the new commissioner in for, to give a sit in writing later, I, one question, and that was just, you know, how many months do we wait as councilors when we put a request in for it to get done before we elevate it to the mayor's office or to the commissioner himself? I don't really know what that, what the opinion is. Is it two weeks, four weeks, two months? I don't know, because I know they're very busy. So I don't want to keep being a nag to them. And just, I would like that submitted in writing as a formal request to see what the general policy is between the mayor and the commissioner on. How many, how much time do we give these requests before we follow up or raise the elevator?
Thank you, Counselor. That's a, that's a great question, and what I, so we'll certainly submit that, and what I'd, what I'd ask is for Mr. Bossanetto to wait until the appropriate time where he feels he's been able to observe a pattern?
Mm-hmm.
And get a general sense of the operation, so he understands how the normal ebb and flow go in terms of volume from council, et cetera, before he makes a determination on what the best process is for elevating and escalating issues as they arise. But that's, that's certainly a great point, because I know that as councilors, particularly ward councilors, submit, you know, at times, you know, hundreds per month of concerns or issues, and hopefully, they're going through the same process of See Click Fix, so they can be monitored, tracked, and observed, and, and you can evaluate the statistics. But at the end of the day, you know, I think, you know, we each, we each send a heavy volume of items, whether it's through the, through the petition process, or through phone calls, emails, See Click Fix, et cetera, and everything funnels in from different directions. So I know that we want to make this as efficient, and we want to be as effective as possible so that, that your time is used most effectively. And certainly, you know, I think, to speak to Counselor Boishman's point of, you know, each of the ward councilors and each of the councilors around here, you know, know the importance of, of our individual neighborhoods. They're precious to us, right? And they're where we live, and they're where, you know, they're where the folks that we call our community live. And, and, you know, I'm confident that you'll come to treat, you know, each of these neighborhoods and the entire city as a whole the same way we feel and treat our individual wards and neighborhoods and community.
And I just wanted to add one more thing.
I apologize. I, I stole your platform. The floor is yours, Counselor Dina Tally.
I just wanted to end with, I wanted to personally thank outgoing Commissioner Laxo for his many years of dedicated service to the city. Mr. Laxo was extremely responsive and extreme, you know, extremely diligent in following through on requests, at least from my experience. And, you know, I, I'm very excited to see his replacement is, is immensely qualified and, but I wanted to thank him for his service, and I thought he did a fantastic job with what he had. And, and Mr. Bossanetto is getting great staff. The men and women of the DPW really answered the call, and I don't hear any complaints from them. And so I think, I think you're going to be very happy with who you've got. So I, I wanted to thank him and wish you the best of luck. You'll be hearing from us a lot, I'm sure. Thank you.
And, Counselor, sorry for, for stealing the floor from you. And I'll just add, I asked a question during the Appointments Committee about, you know, how with limited resources and staffing, and, you know, how, how you adjust and with, with needs coming from, from all areas of the city. And in particular, I spoke to the parks, the trails, the recreational areas throughout the city, and, and his answer is how you do that is through collaboration and communication, and, and really working with those internal agencies like the Conservation Commission, and working with the volunteers that, that go beyond the official appointed boards, and really making sure that there's this constant collaboration. And I think that's the spirit of the, the individual and the candidate that we have before us. And with that type of attitude and mentality, I know that he'll be poised for, for success in the city for years to come. So with that, I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report, which voted unanimously 4-0. Counselor Green recused herself of Mr. Nicholas H. Bossanetto for a term to expire July 3, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Look forward to work, yes.
Look forward to.
Want to.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Go get them.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We identified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squalia.
If there are no objection, sorry, report from the Record Committee on Records, Counselor Squalia, would you mind giving the, the report from the committee?
We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Will the records, can your report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, there are two such letters this evening. First is regarding poll workers for the period of September 1, 2019, through August 31, 2020, and the second is regarding permanent reserve police officers for the city of Pittsburgh for Mr. Brian M. Jelineus, Timothy W. Harndon, Colin T. Banahan, and Daniel A., Daniel G. Adorn. Those will be sent to the Appointments Committee. And we also have one other communication from the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board, which will be placed on file with the city clerk. Next, we'll hear a report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on June 25 and took up five matters.
I'd like to accept 182, 183, and 184-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 182, 3, and 4-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 184-19 ordered that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Retail Standards Grant Program in the approximate amount of $1,500.
Approved.
Sorry.
Approved.
I read the wrong one. 188-19. Let's try this again. Ordered that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division grant in the approximate amount of $768,450 for the purpose of said grant, which is to pay for the construction phase of the airport runway construction project, and the recommendation was that be adopted.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee on 188 and 189-19.
Counselor, we'll need to do 189 separately by roll call vote.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and second to accept 188-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, Counselor Boishman. Matter carries, nine to one.
Motion to approve loan order 189-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 189-19, a loan order to appropriate $15,369,000 to pay costs of the runway at Pittsburgh Municipal Airport, as outlined in the enclosed loan order. I have a motion and second, and we'll take this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yay.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
That's a big no.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Matter, motion passes, nine to one. Legislative Affairs Committee, Counselor Walsh.
Mr. President, the Legislative Affairs Committee met on June 25, 2019. There was one item on the agenda, 166-19, Human Resources Director Susan Davis, to designate the COGSAL caretaker and the temporary seasonal labor positions as special municipal employee as special municipal employee positions under Mass. General Law Chapter 268A. And it was voted three to zero to be, to grant that petition.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Legislative Affairs Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to approve, to accept the Public Works Committee report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report from the meeting of June 25, 2019. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 189, 198, 199 to the Finance Committee.
Second.
We'll jump back in. I have a motion and second to send 198 and 199 to the Finance Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Sorry, I apologize. One in opposition, Councilor Squalia. Motion carries, nine to one. And we'll, we'll return back. We have two recessed hearings. It's July, Counselor. New fiscal year, these things happen, apparently. That's right. That's right. So, 029, 19. Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by amending the Table of Principal Uses Concerning Medical Offices and further define different medical and medical office uses per vote of the Fitchburg Planning Board. That was on January 8, 2019. I now declare the hearing resumes. And, Counselors, the petition was remanded back to the Planning Board on June 18. The Planning Board expects to receive a further draft amendment from the Law Department for its meeting on July 9. So I'd ask that, we'll still ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak to it, but I'd ask that this be recessed until July 16. Before we do that, I just want to ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay. That said, we will, I have a motion and second to resume recess until July 16. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing is recessed. Next, 076, 19. Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by revising Section 181.87, Smart Growth Overlay District in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 181.87. I now declare the hearing resumed. Counselors, I have a letter, and you may have received this in the email, by email today. This is from the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. It is dated yesterday, July 1. Dear Council President, through you, we respectfully wish to express our support for the above referenced proposal to the City Council. To many, housing and economic development are two separate subjects, each independent of each other. However, this could not be further from the truth. A city's commercial vitality is inextricably linked to the community which takes root within it. Residents not only represent employers and taxpayers, but customers and patrons as well. This is particularly true within the traditional downtown centers that stand at the heart of any municipality. The Department of Planning and Community Development's proposed amendments recognize us and seek to cultivate just such a dynamic neighborhood. The changes they have requested expand the existing Smart Growth Overlay District to include a number of key parcels primed for development. There is clear demand for modern market rate housing options in Fitchburg. The occupants these apartments attract are the type who frequent the local coffee shop, show, catch a show at the community theater, or meet friends for a glass at a craft brewery down the street. If the city is to attract these professionals and skilled workers, it must position itself to provide the home amenities that they have come to expect. Not only does this proposal expand opportunities for Fitchburg's city center, it enables a vital project that is already underway. The BF Brown Arts Community, in conjunction with the rehabilitation of City Hall and the Theater Block, will change the face of downtown Fitchburg. The artists who occupy its loft will revitalize a classic building that has lain vacant for years and increase foot traffic throughout the community, to say nothing of the positive impact of their work that will, that will have upon the look and feel of the neighborhood. For these reasons, we at the Chamber ask that you vote to pass important legis, this important legislation. As always, we thank you all for your public service and look forward to Fitchburg's continued growth and prosperity. Sincerely, Roy Nasimento, President and CEO, and Christopher McDermott, Public Affairs Manager. Good evening, Mr. Skrofsky.
Good evening, Counselors. I also wrote a memo regarding the Smart Growth Overlay District. I trust that you all have it in front of you, so I don't have to read it out loud. But I figured I could go over sort of the cliff notes of this, what I called in the memo an amendment. It's really, in effect, a repeal and replace of our existing Smart Growth Ordinance. It takes all the critical elements that existed in the previous ordinance, which was primarily focused along the River Street Corridor. It adds the downtown to that district, and it makes a series of other changes along with that. I want to walk through just the basics of what this Smart Growth Amendment will seek to do. You know, first and foremost, it will look to promote smart growth downtown. That's something that many of you counselors witnessed when Smart Growth America came in here to present to the Council the benefits of smart growth. And in their next steps memo, they highlighted the importance of building housing opportunities downtown, and that connection between housing and economic development, as was indicated in the letter from the Chamber. Our Economic Development Strategic Plan indicated much of the same and called for denser housing development downtown. And again, that's what this proposed Smart Growth Ordinance would seek to do. Some of the benefits it offers to developers, it offers streamlined housing production. So currently, if a developer would like to produce dense housing downtown, they would have to do it through special permit, which is a fairly onerous process. This would allow them to do so by right. In addition, it would reduce the parking requirement from two spaces per unit to 1.25 spaces per unit, which certainly makes it easier for developers to produce housing in the downtown and meet their off-street parking requirements. And as was mentioned in the letter, this will be the key zoning for the Fitchburg Arts Community, otherwise known as BF Brown. Currently, that project is not permitted through our existing zoning. It's in a residential district, and housing development of that density would not be allowed, period, not by any type of special permit. This opens that up to development. It is part of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40R, known as the Smart Growth Statute. And as such, it's really passed a rigorous review at the state level. We submitted a thousand-page application to the state. It went through a three-month review process. So what you're looking at in front of you, for all intents and purposes, is the ordinance that the state has accepted. And any further changes would really have to go to state-level review. And that could hang the process up a bit more. But also, again, it passed rigorous review, so there's a good chance many of those suggested changes would not go through. There are two methods by which this new zoning ordinance would help us produce more revenue by also producing housing. The first is the zoning incentive payment. By accepting this district, we'd be eligible for up to $600,000 in a zoning incentive payment, which is also what we got for the River Street District. Because this is our second district, those payments will actually be tied to housing production. So we'll get initially $75,000 tied to the Fitchburg Arts Community project. But through subsequent production, we could be eligible for up to $600,000 in zoning incentive payments. Another additional source of revenue, we get $3,000 per unit of housing produced within this district for the Fitchburg Arts Community. That'd be roughly $180,000 in density bonus payments, what they refer to it as. And one important note in, within this Smart Growth Zone, there is an affordability requirement. Any property 14 units or above, there's a 20% affordability requirement. Of course, the converse of that is any developments less than 13 units or less do, are exempt from that affordability requirement. And if you think about our downtown and housing development opportunities, there's a lot of small-scale housing growth. And this could allow, in addition to helping us meet our affordable housing requirements, it will provide us with an opportunity to make it easier to permit small-scale housing development downtown of a market rate nature. And then, back on the affordability subject, currently, the, the City of Fitchburg is not meeting its 40B obligations. If you're familiar with 40B, that is the state statute that requires that at least 10% of our housing stock is deed-restricted affordable. Currently, we're at just shy of 9%. And what that basically means is if a developer did want to produce affordable housing that had, a development that had at least 25% affordable housing, they actually could circumvent local zoning. They could go to the state level and apply for a 40B permit, and basically leapfrog the ordinance we currently have on the books. Unless the municipality shows that it's making efforts to meet its obligations. And in other examples, the, the state has actually highlighted the town of Reading in 2011. Their Smart Growth districts were used as evidence to deny a 40B permit. So basically, this developer came and said, "We want to leapfrog the zoning ordinance because we're going to produce affordable housing, and they don't have enough of it." But the state looked at what Reading was doing and said, "Well, they're trying with their 40R ordinance." And I think that's what we could prove here with our new ordinance that basically produces the potential for a large amount of more affordable housing to be developed within the city. So this is, in effect, a cover that allows us to have the housing produced on our terms as a city. And it certainly enhances state competitiveness. I mentioned there, different grants such as Mass. Works or any other grants and programs through the Commonwealth. The more we're producing more housing, particularly within our downtown, the more we're aligning with the Commonwealth's vision and, and really needs, because there is an extreme housing shortage. And aside from the grants and other opportunities that we might avail ourselves to, I think it's also a critical economic development opportunity. There's a pretty serious housing shortage throughout the Commonwealth. And this is basically us saying we want to take advantage of that and turn it into an opportunity for downtown Fitchburg. Currently, you know, given the housing boom throughout the state, we're 315th in the Commonwealth in terms of our housing production. This is, you know, for a host of reasons, many of which are completely out of our control. But this is one way to take hold of something that is within our control, and to look within our downtown and say, "How can we make it easier to produce, to produce housing?" And that's what we're doing here. We're taking an ordinance to allow us, allow developers to produce housing by right and to reduce those parking requirements to make it easier to produce housing. I think if you take a look at any of the dense urban housing we have within the downtown, the Fitchburg Yarn Lofts, the 470 Main Street Project, the Riverside Commons, they all include an affordability element, to be sure. But they're also mixed-income housing. And all of that housing, you know, you're going to have a hard time finding an apartment within any of those developments, because there is a real high demand for that type of housing, and we don't have enough of it within the city. So I think this is an opportunity to attract a new workforce, to attract new talent to the city. It's an opportunity to retain people and to keep folks within the City of Fitchburg, both young and old. And I think it's a, it's an excellent opportunity, not only for the Fitchburg Arts Community, but for other projects downtown, and to really help layer on to all the other initiatives, whether it's Reimagine North of Maine, TDI, or, you know, the Fitchburg Arts Community, the Fitchburg State University Theater Block, and all the exciting things that are happening downtown. This is really a way to say, "Here's one extra thing we can do to help get us past the finish line, to, you know, reach the downtown revitalization goals." I know we all share here at the table. So there, without further ado, I guess I'll take questions, if anyone has them, and, and probably should point you to one amendment. That's more of a just small detail, but it is an important one. I included one change. As I said, this is passed rigorous state review. It was so rigorous, they kept reviewing it after they approved it. So I got, I got an email from the state that wanted to add one additional line, and I included it in the packet that I submitted to everyone, and it read lines to change.
Move document 076, 19 per the DHCD comments.
Second.
I think procedurally, because we're in a, so we're in a public hearing, and that is another item, a couple of pages down on the agenda. So I think procedurally, once we've started a public hearing, we should dispatch the item that's, that's currently before us. But thank you, we'll, we'll then, we'll then move to that item shortly after this. So thank you for calling our attention to it.
And know how to tackle that.
Yeah. That said, Counselor Green.
I commend you and your department once again for the work put into this. I do have a couple of questions, comments, and for public clarification. When we talk about the downtown district and the downtown area, is it a fair statement to say that there are very few buildings in the downtown corridor that the City of Fitchburg actually own and control?
Yes. We, I can't think of any offhand.
Okay. So with that being said, this type of project works best if there is, one, a building for sale that a developer would be interested in purchasing and further developing to meet these criteria that the Smart Overlay spells out for us? What is the City of Fitchburg doing currently to attract or to market those properties to the developers that have the means to get this from start to finish?
That's a great question. Actually, I think last time we had spoke, I showed the Council a new program called CoStar, which, which produces listings. It's a professional real estate analytics website that produce listings for various properties. You know, we do quite a bit of work with properties that are listed. We probably do even more work with properties that aren't listed, but should be. A great example is the Sovereign Bank or the Santander Building, that, you know, the property owner wasn't even aware that Santander was in the process of moving to Water Street. We made them aware, and we've been working with them to help market the property to potential developers before that property even hits the market. Certainly, part of our TDI efforts and Reimagine North of Maine are another opportunity to bring additional boots on the ground, help market those properties. Particularly with TDI, we have, you know, connections with Mass. Development, the state's real estate and finance arm, that we are multiple times a week getting inquiries from developers and investors, and through Francisco Torres and Joe Ferguson, connecting those developers with the property owners to do walking tours, but then also from there, bringing them back to City Hall to talk with both city officials about what we can do to help make their process clear and upfront and predictable. But then also, how do we connect them with resources they need, whether it's Mass. Development financing, whether it might be special incentives locally, like our HDIP program, which offers tax credits for market rate housing? How do we connect folks with the consultants they need to unlock historic tax credits or affordable housing tax credits? We find those developers, connect them with the right resources and the property owners they need to help make their projects happen. And, you know, certainly, we're in a bit of a, we're, we're at that nascent period where I think a lot of that development is sort of happening behind the scenes. You're not seeing a lot of it yet, but, you know, we're certainly doing our best.
Right. And I, again, commend the effort, because I, I know of some of the behind-the-work. And it's not fast. It's a very slow process from start to finish on some of these old, very large buildings. Does this program ease up our building code to allow that to be a phased-in process versus, you know, now you now own a five-story building, and it all has to be up to code day one? Does any of this program allow for a phasing in or an incentive to get entrepreneurs first-floor retail space while market rate housing is proposed for floors two to five?
Unfortunately, not. We, this is really an effort for us to do what's within our control, which is making the local permitting process as easy as possible, again, allowing by right as opposed to a special permit. So we're making things easy at the local level. The building codes are, you know, set at the state level. And a lot of those requirements, we, we can't necessarily circumvent. What we can do is offer other incentives, both through TDI and Reimagine North of Maine. We offer incentives for Main Street storefront development. And there's going to be a couple other resources that are going to become available within the next few months that I hope to be able to announce, whether through my newsletter, to the Council, through a formal report. But, you know, certainly, what we can do is, is produce more housing in the upper stories, so there's more of an economic incentive to create storefronts on the first floors. You know, I think the BF Brown Fitchburg Arts Community is a great example of that. The, the market study that looked at that site said that it would support 6,500 square feet of commercial development downtown. And I think if you look at it within just the, that one single project and kind of project out, if we could get some other housing development happening, that's where that housing and economic development connection is made, where you're creating consumers to live, work, and play downtown. And that's ultimately our goal here.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
Come. I want to say thank you. I got a couple of questions. We talked earlier today, and I told you what I was going to ask you, a couple of questions, and I am. Now, I read Smart Growth, and I believe, I believe some of the aspects of it, not all, but some. And I believe that if we're going to make Main Street the Smart Growth Area, then we should do it right from the very beginning, and not do it piece by piece. Especially where we have so many vacant storefronts. And I, and I asked you that question today. Why aren't we looking at the possibility of taking from Fox Street all the way down to Day Street and make that your business district? And in the back, because I got invited to the Smart Growth thing at the university, and it shows that, and you took study after study, and people want green. I want to be able to sit down and get the Wi-Fi, and have an ice cream, or have a beer, or have a lunch by a park near the water. And I just say to myself, "Why are we piecemealing this whole thing when we have so many storefronts empty? And it'll be a lot easier to put everything all in one package now, and we're not going to hurt people." That's number one. Number two, the thing that I have a hard time to swallow is the 1.25 parking spaces. We sat in this council when an investor came in front of us on a vacant piece We sat in this council when an investor came in front of us on a vacant piece of property and we said, "Two, two, two." Parking spaces per unit. I have no problem with the 1.2, none whatsoever. But if we're going to set the rules for 1.2 here, then we should be doing it throughout the city. That's my argument because we have investors that want to buy these properties and we're saying, "Nope, two, two, two." But then, Smart Growth comes in and they say, "No, you don't need that. We'll give you 1.25 and that's okay with us." Well, it's two different standards. I thought we all were governed by the same set of rules. So why are we, I'll go for it, as long as we sit down and we start talking about these investors that bought property and we made them put in two, 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 and some are even coming still in front of the zoning and they're saying, "Nope, two, two, two. And if you can't do it, you can't rent out that third floor unit." If we get a set of rules here, then the same set of rules should apply here because they pay taxes, dislike they pay taxes. And that's how I look at it. I think it's kind of foolish to say to this guy that owns a three-family and he can't rent it because he's only got five parking spaces, not six. And that's my problem. But I'm going to vote for this. I'll vote for it. But I don't want to piecemeal it, not when we have so many vacant properties downtown. Why do you want to piecemeal, why put somebody to hold up their business when there's nobody there and we can do everything all at once? Why would you want to do that, dog? They're all empty. Most of the stores are empty. What do you got, three stores down there? Four? Really? Why would you want to? Why not be, take the initiative and take the bow by the horn and say, "We're going to do this. We're going to make that," I'll use Boulder Drive because you got the river right there and you got the park, and say, "We're going to close it off and that's where it's, the activity is going to be right here." And then you get your business district and everybody's going to flock downtown. It happened in New York, I seen it. Where they came, all came because they had the area. Why wait?
Counselor Boishman, I know you have a question buried in there. Was that hypothetical or would you like?
No, that's what I'm just saying. That's all I want to know, why we're waiting, why we piecemealing it? That's all.
So, I appreciate you taking the time to read through the ordinance and talk it over with me on numerous occasions in my office. I feel like, to some degree, it's like I get the answers to the test before I take it because I know the questions you're going to ask. And thank you for taking the time to prepare. I guess you mentioned one question about infrastructure in particular. You know, I would love to, if we are awarded a Mass Works grant, to convert two-way Boulder Drive and Main Street like you all gave me my marching orders last spring. I'd love to come in front of the council and kind of present the plans to you and talk through what that might look like and work through the designs at that point in time. On the second question related to parking requirements in other neighborhoods, you know, I think to some degree that's a separate question. On the other hand, I appreciate where you're coming from here. You know, I think one thing is downtown functions differently, right? Downtown is different than Claymore or parts of the College neighborhood. It has different parking needs and it certainly has a different supply of parking. It's certainly well borne out in the parking study that we just had done within the downtown that showed that we have an abundance of off-street parking, whether it's surface lots or structured parking. We're using about three in 10 of those spaces at peak hour. At non-peak, it can go as low as .5 out of every 10 spaces we have. So we're not using a lot of our off-street parking. This is an opportunity to monetize that off-street parking. I also think the other aspect that makes downtown different is the proximity to transit. We're certainly right next to the intermodal center and bus systems and certainly studies have showed that there is a less reliance on automobile when you have close access to transit. And then the other thing I'd say is if a developer does want to have less than one or two parking spaces per unit, they do have recourse within the zoning, they can get a special permit from the planning board to reduce their parking requirements as necessary or in certain events they can go to the ZBA as well. You know, I think zoning is a blunt instrument and sometimes it's good not to have a one-size-fits-all policy and I think downtown does function differently and should have its own rules in many respects. Although I do think your broader point, why do we let properties sit vacant that don't have parking and are never going to have it? I think it's something for the council to consider. You know, it's certainly something that keeps me up at night knowing that we have vacant buildings in good shape that simply don't have parking off-street. But that might be a case of, as opposed to what this ordinance is getting to, off-street parking requirements, that might be something related to, can we develop a system for permitting on-street parking in an organized, coherent, consistently enforced fashion? But that might be a separate issue than the one that's in front of us today, but it's certainly one that I'm interested in. I don't know where the rest of the council stands or the constituents of the city, frankly.
Counselor Zerilla.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to address a couple of those points, just because I do sit on the zoning board and have for quite a while and so these are things that come up pretty frequently. First, I'd just like to note, zoning inherently is essentially the concept of different rules for different areas. If, you know, if we had the same rules for everywhere in the city, we wouldn't have a zoning code. So it makes sense to have fewer parking spaces required for downtown apartments when you're within walking distance of the municipal lot and the intermodal and all of those places as opposed to allowing less than two spots per unit in a dense residential neighborhood where in the winter, as we all know, there's no room for on-street parking. It's not even allowed during snowstorms, but even when it's not, the streets get narrower because of the snow. It never gets plowed completely curb to curb because you can't in Pittsburgh weather. I keep up with that all the time. So you wind up with this scenario where if you've got cars on even one side of the street, you've got three-quarters of a lane to drive in on some of these residential neighborhoods. That's not feasible, especially if you need to get fire trucks through. We've had cases on the zoning board where people want to get permission to have on-street parking and we've driven up there, the board members have driven up there and looked at the street and said, "You put a car here and one of these houses catches fire, the whole thing's burning to the ground." Because they'd have to run a hose from the end of the street all the way up the street. That's also why I think it makes sense to do this in chunks.
Counselor, I'll just interrupt for the public. I see a couple of members of our fire department here saying, "They'll get a hose through that car, they'll get an engine up there."
Oh, I'm sure they will.
But the car owner won't be happy afterwards.
I'm sure they will. But I'd rather not have to have fire trucks needing to push aside consumer vehicles to get where they need to go. Believe me, I have no doubts that our fire department will get the job done. So that's, the concept of zoning in general is also why I think it makes sense to do this in discreet chunks rather than the entire Main Street area. Because this particular Smart Growth plan isn't a general kind of omnibus development plan. It's specifically for mixed use with a focus on housing. If you look at some of the eastern portions of Main Street, that's not what you want going there. You don't want apartments past Day Street on Main Street. That's commercial area. I may be delineating it not quite right, but if you go much past the bridge, that's commercial. That's not apartments anymore. So it makes sense to look at what areas do we want to be mixed-use apartments, small shops, et cetera? And then, when we do our comprehensive zoning overhaul, which we have appropriated funds for a consult on, then we can look at the other sections and say, is our zoning map up to date? Are we doing what we want to do? And that's really, I can't overstate how important that is to our city's development in general, to zone for what you want to see. Because that, we see that more often than, and that's why I'm so glad this is happening in this area, because we see more often than anything else on the zoning board, situations where someone comes forward with a plan that makes sense for their lot, but either they can't do it at all or they have to jump through all sorts of hoops to do it, not because we don't want to help them, not because anyone in the city is throwing up roadblocks for them, but because that's not how it's zoned and we don't have the authority to just say, "Well, we know the zoning is this, but we're just going to ignore it because your project makes sense." Even with a variance, you can't just throw it out like that. There are hoops to jump through, to get a variance, to say, "This isn't what it's zoned for, but we're going to let you do it anyway." And that discourages investment. If you are doing your homework, if you're a smart investor, the kind of investor we want to attract to Pittsburgh and ought to fly by night, you know, throw the money at it and see if it sticks, you're going to do your homework, you're going to look at the property, you're going to say, "I want to put a house here. This is zoned industrial." I can probably get a variance for that, but it's going to take time. There are probably going to be conditions on it. There's going to be all sorts of stuff. Maybe I'll just invest elsewhere. This sort of project here, this sort of rezoning here and the rezoning that we're going to be doing going forward is how we solve that. Because Pittsburgh is not the same city that it was the last time we did a comprehensive rezoning. There are areas that their practical day-to-day use doesn't resemble what they're zoned for at all. And I'm sure everyone sitting here and everyone listening can think of at least one of those areas off the top of their heads. So I want to commend the community development department for moving forward on this and I look forward to continuing. Smart zoning is what's going to get us the flexibility we need for development.
Counselor Squalia.
Thank you. So the Smart Growth Overlay District has shown that it's worked in developing housing like we want, right? The last zoning district that was put forth in the city was in 2010 and that included the Riverside Commons, the Yarn Works, and the Ivor Johnson Mills, which has a whole housing development proposed, right?
It's worth noting, the Yarn Loft project is that was actually permitted through a special permit. For whatever reason, they didn't go through even though they met all the requirements. Would have been nice to get that $3,000 density bonus per unit, but they didn't apply that way. But yeah, I mean, I think it still sort of helped to create the character, the new character of that whole corridor, which was a lot of vacant properties that are now being turned in housing. The Yarn, the Riverside Commons project was permitted under that. I'm not sure if the Ivor Johnson project will be, but even if it's not, I think it's important to note that, you know, it's not, it's not a silver bullet solution, what we're looking at here. It's one thing to create a chain reaction to create other types of development. You know, certainly the 93 Nokeg project wasn't a Smart Growth project, but because of all the development happening in that area, it helped to, development begets development, right? And I think you could say the same for the Yarn Loft project or the Ivor Johnson, one which will follow.
So on that, the advantages and disadvantages of applying through the 40R Smart Growth. If you apply through a special permit, the 40R allows us to go from two parking spaces per unit to 1.25. And so what would be the advantage or disadvantage for a developer to not apply through a 40R and apply through a special permit?
I don't, I'm not sure there are any advantages to applying through a special permit. I honestly don't know why the developer did that in the Yarn Loft case. I think the only case you would make is if you had 100% affordable housing or 100% market rate project, this wouldn't be right for you because it needs to be at least 20% affordable. But I think in all other cases, you get by right a lower parking requirement. If it's not a special permit, the board cannot ask as much of you as a developer. They certainly can adhere to the design standards, which the planning board approves, which has helped to shape the character of the River Street corridor and hopefully will do the same here within the downtown, but it's less restrictive by nature. So I think any developer that has a project that's at least 20% affordable, this is really the way to go for them.
So, for example, within the Smart Growth District, which encompasses a majority of the Main Street, it includes the lot on Day Street and Main Street, which has the proposed 112-unit apartments?
Correct.
Am I, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, the informational meeting, but is it correct that they only require one parking space per unit in that development?
That's what they're asking for. So it's going to be going in front of the board for, likely for a vote in its July meeting. But they could very well turn it down if they didn't feel it was appropriate. And because it's intended to be 100% market rate project, it couldn't apply here. But that's a great example of, if the planning board turned down the one space per unit request, they could get one space, 1.25 spaces per unit through this code without the planning board's permission. In a sense, it would be by right, it would be an allowed use.
Where, so we have the zoning incentive payment, up to $600,000 for this additional zoning district or is that in total for the entire city?
So we received a $600,000 payment in 2010 with the first district. My understanding is that that went to the general fund. But because of, I would assume, economic conditions, you know, we were in a different place at that point in time and, you know, right at the onset of the recession. But what I would, I guess, ask of the board and the council here, it's certainly something to consider, but I would like to think about these payments in the future going towards Smart Growth benefits happening and in around the areas where the developments are happening. So we are eligible for $75,000 initially when this is accepted. We're eligible for up to $525,000 additional dollars in zoning incentive payments, but it will be tied to production and it's basically a grid that, once we get past the 100-unit threshold, we're eligible for $200,000. Once we get past, I think, the 300-unit threshold, that goes up to $375,000, all the way up to, if we produce at least 501 units of housing through this, we'd be eligible for up to $600,000. Probably not going to happen in the near future, but I do think between the Pittsburgh Arts Community, and I'm going to try to see, although it's already permitted, if the Moran Square Development could be permitted under 40R, certainly what the developer would like to do, that would up that number to $200,000 in the near future. And then, of course, there's $3,000 per unit in addition.
So we could take those payments and put them towards like a storefront, business storefront grant for the, you know, the first-floor units like they do in other cities with Main Streets that are a little forgotten?
Right. We could certainly look at, and sort of aligning with some of the things that Counselor Green had mentioned, how we can support commercial development on the first floor. I think it probably might vary per development. I certainly think with the Pittsburgh Arts Community, as Mark Dohwin alluded to, that development is happening right beside Low Park, which is, you know, could use a little bit of love, frankly. And certainly in working with the Parks Board, with the necessary permissions and approvals that development will need from the Parks Board, it's been communicated that, you know, both the mayor's office and our office support the use of the density bonus payment to go towards Low Park and really revitalizing that park as a component of the broader development. So I think generally speaking, I think it would be a good idea to not just put these funds in the general fund, and maybe that's another question for another day, but I do think it would be a smart thing to do to put this new source of revenue towards Smart Growth within the area that we're permitting housing development.
And talking about all these additional housing units, if we, I believe if we develop 300 units with a best practices plan, which this Smart Growth might be our best practice, then we become eligible for the state housing choice? Can you talk about what benefits we have to that?
Sure. So the Housing Choice Communities Program is a new program that basically looks to incent communities to produce more housing. And you can be eligible in one of two ways. You can produce at least 300 new units of housing within the last five years or 3% of your housing stock, whichever is, well, I guess you could choose whichever one you'd like. And then you have to pass basically a criteria of best practices. This 40R district could be one, but there are other criteria. Having in-law apartments allowed by right is another great example. Having a housing production plan, having an economic development strategic plan. I think we meet three of the four best practices right now, if we're counting Smart Growth. So we'd still need another one and then we'd need to produce 300 units. The other option is to produce at least 500. The other option is to produce at least 500 units of housing within the last five years. We're not going to get there anytime soon, so this is really our best bet. And what it means for us, if you qualify as a housing choice community, frankly, it's another box you can check when you're applying for grants, and the state recognizes that you're doing the right thing and you're trying to meet your housing production goals. It's a box that I cannot check with our upcoming Mass Works application, and I wish I could. And it also does make us available for grants related to the Housing Choice Community Program, which are smaller planning grants, but, you know, relative drop in the bucket, but it's, you know, another grant and a resource we could pursue.
Okay. One, my last question is, there are concerns with increased housing in cities like ours that there's increased cost to schooling, you know, schoolchildren. So with 300 additional units, how many children do we have to put in our public schools? There are educational payments that are associated with the smart growth that we get from the state? Can you talk about that?
Sure. That is a component of 40R, it's called 40S, that I actually didn't mention too much because I'm not sure if it's something I would hang our hats on here, just trusting the state to continue funding this program and doling out monies accordingly, and it's a tough thing to report. But, but the gist of it is that at the end of every year, you can, with a new housing project, you can say, here's the increased, the increased workload that this housing development has produced on your city schools, and you get to basically be eligible for a payment of the difference. My sense is that that payment's really hard to get approval from at the state level. And the other element, actually, and I think this is important for the council to understand, is that it's, it's tough to find a huge net increase on city schools with programs like this that develop dense housing. Because in concert with other things we're doing, whether it's our demolition programs or other programs throughout the city, we're, we're adding units as we're subtracting them. And really, the net increase is not insignificant, but it's not as significant, I think many folks think.
Thank you. I think this Smart Growth District in the downtown is the right move. I think it's absolutely what we need to do because the goal is to increase housing in our downtown right near our train station. So I absolutely approve of this, and I can't wait to see what it looks like 10 years into the future. Thank you.
Counselor De Natale.
So earlier I was talking about perception as reality. And, you know, there are too many people in the city who perceive that downtown is a ghost town, and it's not. When I say that, I'm considered someone with rose-colored glasses who's got his blinders on, but I always try to accentuate the positives because usually comments like that are from people who don't know what they're talking about. So, you know, you look at the Moran Square area. I know there are some things going on throughout the downtown that we are not liberty to talk about. Because nothing's a guarantee, but there's a lot of wheels in motion on a lot of sectors of that area, specifically the buildings on the right across from where that development is taking place, that nothing's happened yet, but the wheels are in motion. So until people start seeing construction on the ground, they're not going to believe anything is going to happen. But there are things that are happening. So, you know, I go back to when I started on the council in 2008. I remember when you had that disgusting-looking building where Matt Fornier has developed that new building across from Fitchburg Plumbing. I remember that stretch, it was an eyesore. I remember the stretch where the music shop used to be, where the CVS is now, what that looked like when it was closed. So I look at from the train station area down to Moran Square, it looks radically different than it did 12 years ago. And it's going to look even more radically different if those wheels in motion I'm talking about come to fruition, but it takes a long time, unfortunately. Then I look at, so the perception is driven by the areas between Day Street and passed up by the theater, to the theater block. So from the beginning of the theater block where Fidelity Bank was, or is, all the way to Day Street, people focus on that sector of downtown. They ignore Upper Main Street, which is not vacant, and you've got BF Brown, you've got City Hall, you've got the theater block, and 10 years, 12 years ago, the theater block was vacant and decaying. Now it's being developed. You have City Hall being developed with Bank of America, you have BF Brown being developed now, things that weren't happening 10 years ago. All in the guise of, as you said, it takes a long time. But I want to bring out those, those facts because when people say downtown is not, not doing well, it's not doing as good as we'd like it to, but it's a lot better than it was a decade ago. And the things that are going on now took years to happen. So people look at from Day Street to Pritchard Street, and then from Pritchard Street to Putnam Street, they look at those two sectors where Shacks used to be, and that spot across from Santander Bank, and across where Santander Bank is. They look at those two spots and they go, a lot of vacancies. And then I look at what your office is trying to do, what I've heard we've tried to do for the last 12 years as a government, and sometimes I feel as if there's only so much the city can do, and that we reach a point where we got to let the market drive these improvements. So, yeah, this is another tool in the toolbox that will assist us, but you got to have a market for someone that wants to put the money in. Now, what frustrates me is when people talk about our vacant buildings in the downtown area, they say it with a connotation that it's our fault that it's like that, the city. You know, they're acting like someone comes in here and says, I want to put $100,000 on this property. We go, no, we don't want to, we want to keep it vacant, you know? So a lot of these vacant lots, these vacant properties, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't these not owners of these properties who are not choosing to put money into their facilities to bring them up to code compliance so they can market them for lease or for sale? Isn't that, that the case in a lot of these instances?
I'd say that's accurate with a fair number of properties. I think that's one of the reasons that I'm excited we have a new executive director of the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority. That's what they're ultimately supposed to do, is act as a public sector developer that can help turn around some of these properties that have long sat dormant with, like I mentioned with that one development, they didn't even know their tenant was going to leave, and we knew six months before they did. I think we do have some cases where there are certainly property owners that are absentee and don't care. I think there are ones that are interested in taking advantage of programs like this, and, you know, the more we can make it easier for the good ones to make good investments in our downtown, the better equipped we'll be.
Yeah, I just, I just, again, I sound like I'm a cheerleader, but I'm trying to be a realist. The city is not turning people away. You know, there are reasons why those buildings remain vacant. It's not because we're not trying, it's because a lot of these owners don't care to put the money in. And for whatever reason, or they're absentee. Short of like eminent domain, I don't know what else we could do, but, you know, the FRA, I believe is not being utilized as potential because it's too busy managing properties when it's not supposed to be managing properties, which is why we're getting out of Boulder Drive for City Hall. And hopefully at that point, they can sell that facility and get back to what they do best. But I just wanted to mention that, you know, I look at downtown and where it was 12 years ago when I first started here, and look at it now, and there's a lot of radical changes down there. It's because of that middle section. People ignore the upper and the lower because it's good news and we can't have that, they look at the middle. The middle was great, they complain about the outer, you know? And, and, you know, we got the chief earlier, he was talking about more downtown foot patrols. I lived on Main Street for seven years. I never had a problem living there. Look at me, I'm still alive, you know? It's like, so perception drives everything, unfortunately. And you had a couple of businesses close recently in that sector, totally had nothing to do with the city of Fitchburg. Yet there are people out there cheerleading that they closed, saying it was our fault. God forbid a business closes because they're either a failure or they just don't want to do it anymore. We get blamed for it. And the press picks it up because it's a field day when something bad happens in Fitchburg. So, yes, I am, I am defending the city in this case because I look at what you guys are trying to do. And you're trying to do a lot. And there's only so much you can do, but there needs to be a give and a take. Now, I look at the fact, you talked about it earlier, the River Street area, the yarn mill, Knockedge, River Street 245, and you got Center Pizza there, it's like, that wasn't there 10 years ago. So that whole corridor has been radically changed. So there's been a lot of good stuff happening the last decade, and I think a lot of people, unfortunately, are ignoring it because of maybe a quarter of a mile or a half a mile a strip on Main Street that, in a lot of cases, has nothing to do with us. We're doing our best. So I think the skepticism on some people's parts when it comes to adding more housing downtown, and that'll drive retail, is they look at River Street and they say, well, 245 is there now, yarn mill is there now, you got that complex in the back Knockedge, it's a business complex, why isn't there anything going on there by way of retail? And they look at across the street, that big vacant spot where that strip was before the fire ripped it apart. So they ask me, well, you've got hundreds of people over here now, where's the business? It's a good question, I'm curious, because when I hear we, we don't have enough business because we don't have people down there, how do you explain the River Street corridor?
That's a great question. I mean, I think the one thing I'd say about that lot, aside from the fact that, well, I won't comment on the listing price, never mind. But what I will comment on is new construction is a lot more expensive than rehabs of historic buildings. And I think one of the reasons we have along the River Street corridor, we don't quite see as much action as we could, is because it's not a traditional walkable downtown. So to get the foot traffic in that area to generate business along the River Street corridor, it has to be, you know, there have to be a series of storefronts people can walk to, and there really aren't that many along River Street currently. I think with downtown, we have an abundance of storefronts. And, you know, I think that will certainly help. Again, it's not a silver bullet, and I do think the housing work that we're trying to promote needs to be coupled with business, both attraction and retention. It certainly has to be coupled with job creation and other opportunities to bring more people downtown, not just to live, but to work and play as well. But I think downtown does function differently than River Street in that way, and I would suspect we'd see a change in that regard. And I suspect that what happened on River Street certainly produced more demand, just not necessarily along that corridor, because I'm not sure it was well-positioned to capitalize on that demand.
I mean, I think it's an insult to the business owners that are on Main Street when we say that there's no business on Main Street. I think it's an absolute insult to them. And it ignores the progress we've made as a city from the last 10 years and what will look like, what it'll probably look like 10 years from now. I mean, I just look at what it was 10 years ago and what it is now, and it's a lot better, but we have a long way to go. That's why I'm acting optimistic, because I've seen what the prior state was, and I see the current state. And I didn't even mention Activate Mill Street, you know? Lot of stuff going on. And there's a lot of stuff going on that you cannot talk about, that at least I know about, and I'm sure many of us do, that is in the works, but nothing's final yet. So I just, people are not patient, and perception is reality, but I just want to keep emphasizing, we have these discussions, what we do have down there. And that it's not a ghost town. So I want to thank your efforts and the city's efforts on doing what we can to spur development down there, but I still hold the opinion that a lot of this is out of our hands, that you've got private owners that are neglecting their properties, that aren't, don't want to put the money into their properties, and you have some private property owners who think they're sitting on a gold mine, and they want three or four times what the market price would be for their lot. I know two off the top of my head that think they're going to get three or four times what their property's actually worth. So that's why they haven't done anything. So you can't do anything about that. So you're doing all we can, and we have to keep supporting that, and I will. And I, I am optimistic that 10 years from now, things will look even better than they do today, just like 10 years ago from this point, they look better now.
I appreciate that optimism.
So, thank you.
I'm not a patient person either, so I understand why people feel the way they feel, even knowing some of the things that I know, and having some of that optimism as well. I understand why people are frustrated, and we're doing everything within our power to, you know, capitalize on some of the momentum that's growing downtown.
Counselor Boishman.
All right, sign off there. I just want to say, Tom, if you explain to everybody here that smart growth's not just residential, that if you look at the River Street corridor, you can have light industrial, if not industrial there, because you do already, you have industrial and a smart growth area. So it's not just residential as everybody's thinking. So I just want to make that very clear, that you can be on the side of, God, it's a tin whacker at 2:00 in the morning, hearing a bang, 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 and zzzzz in the smart growth area. But I'm not finding fault with it because I worked in the smart growth area in Boston, and it was that way. But, and I'm not finding fault, like I said, I'm for, I believe in some of it, not all.
I mean, having smart growth is having a place that people want to live, work, and play, and walk, and bike for all purposes, not just because...
But I'll go back to my statement, my original statement. If you want to draw people downtown, and you and your team saw it, and the people said they wanted a place to sit, eat, and relax, and what better place is Riverside Park in that area, and you can develop and it be a gold mine? I believe in that, I saw the slide where it showed that at City Hall, where they took the road right out, and they made it all grass because they had the river and it was packed, remember? And it worked, they spent a lot of money. So, but it's up to the city, and it's up to you guys, not me. I'm only one. Thank you very much.
That exhausts the speakers list for counselors. That said, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition this evening? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters now before the council.
Move 7619 be granted.
Move to amend 7619?
We don't need the amendment on this, we'll need the amendment on the ordinance that's later on in the agenda.
Okay.
This, this then triggers the ordinance appearing on our agenda and allowing us to then vote on that ordinance for the first time, for its first reading. Counselors, just keep in mind, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you to all those who participated in this process and who came to speak this evening. Next on the agenda, we have orders, orders 198, 19, and 19...
We already sent those.
We already sent those. So next we have orders other, 2019, order that the mayor is authorized to execute a pilot agreement to execute a Gen Thai easement agreement to facilitate a solar project on Fisher Road is approved by petition 31018 and 20219. Order that the mayor, mayor is authorized to execute a pilot agreement for personal property between NESG Solar Holding LLC and the City of Fitchburg. We're going to take these two items together, and I'm going to ask Solicitor Bustatieri to speak to them.
Mayor's Chief of Staff, A.J. Turigney, has asked that we suspend the rules on these two matters. This is an ongoing development that requires the easement to complete its construction, and the pilot agreement, I'd like to add, is probably one of the more lucrative pilot agreements the city's been able to negotiate. And I want to thank Mr. Turigney for the work he did on that.
Motion to suspend 201 and 202.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 201 and 20219. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before the council.
Motion to grant 201 and 202.
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 201 and 20219. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. 20319, order that the Honorable Mayor Stephen De Natale is authorized on behalf of the City of Fitchburg to facilitate and execute the attached community host benefit agreement with Greensoul Organics LLC located at 32 Oak Hill Lane, Fitchburg, Mass. Mr. Solicitor.
And Mr. President, I was asking on behalf of Mr. Turigney to suspend the rules on 20319.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 20319. Counselor Boishman speaking to the motion. This is on the suspension, not on the item itself?
Okay.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor, suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Motion to grant agreement 20319.
Second.
Motion and second to grant 20319. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, I'll vote for this 203-19 with one condition, that we send a letter to the planning board stating that we don't, we don't want to smell the pot situation in that building because they got residential area right next door to it, and we don't want to have that odor going up there.
Counselor Boishman, we can certainly communicate that, however, that is a requirement also by... also by, issued by the state with the expectation that there is no smell and impact on, on neighboring communities from these type of facilities.
Okay, but I, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I talked to Vinnie about it, because sometime on Airport Road I can smell, and I get bad senses, and I can smell it sometime early in the morning.
I told Mr. Boishman I'll go down there tonight and smell it myself.
We'll go to, we'll go together.
I'll refrain. Council, Councilor Green?
I would like to know if the, if this new host agreement has the new language that we voted on that was going to take place.
This is the new language.
Okay, and will all host agreements then follow similarly to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Solicitor, am I correct in understanding that this would represent the first for our city in terms of a minority owner in the marijuana industry, and represent one of the first in Massachusetts as well, in terms of fulfilling, or meeting some of the attempts by the ballot petition?
Absolutely. This group falls within the definition of a portion of our population that has been disproportionately impacted by previous marijuana laws, and I would love to tell you that it is the first in the Commonwealth, but I am sure that it's one of the first from what I've been hearing. And so we're very excited about working with the group and getting the project up and running as quickly as possible.
Wonderful. Well, thanks to the city for, and the administration for, for working with this business owner, and look forward to seeing them begin their, their operation. I have a motion and second in favor of, to grant 20319. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to send 20419 to a public hearing on July 16th?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 20419 to a public hearing on July 16, 2019. On the motion, Councilor Zarella.
I would just like to confirm with the city solicitor, I've got some faculty in the community development department on this one. I wanted to make sure that if we send this directly from here to public hearing, we will be able to resolve it on that date within the time limits imposed?
Yes.
Okay.
We would, we would like to have...
Provided that we take action on it that evening.
The public hearing and the order adopted on July 16th. Yes.
All right, excellent. Just wanted to make sure we weren't going to miss our window.
We, we also considered whether or not a public hearing is really required on some of these. If you look at the statute, it does allow for folks who believe that they have agricultural use to their land, the right to have a public hearing on it. So we're really just checking off the box. It's...
Yeah, makes sense.
795B, if you wanted to look at that, too.
Yeah, always, always better to do more than we have to, and make sure that we're not vulnerable on the back end.
I have a motion and second to send this to a public hearing on July 16, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. 19019 and Order...
19019 be amended?
I have a motion and second to amend 19019, as stipulated in the attached document that we have. I have a motion and second. All those in favor of amending?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 19019.
First reading.
To send 19019 to its first reading as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 20519 and 20619 be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 205 and 20619 to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Councilors, announcements. Let's wrap it, folks. I'm going to go as quickly through these as possible. Wednesday, that's tomorrow, July 3, there's a block party on Main Street from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. with fireworks to follow immediately thereafter. On Thursday, those early risers can stay tuned. Those who are not early risers, you may be woken up. If you live in the immediate downtown vicinity, something has not gone catastrophically wrong. We will be firing the ceremonial cannons from the Civil War, as was the tradition, between 5:30 and 5:40 a.m. You heard that correctly, 5:30 and 5:40 a.m. We are going to be blasting off the cannons on Main Street. Since you're up at 5:30 to 5:40, hopefully you'll stay up and join us for the parade that begins at 10 a.m. around Summer and John Fitch intersection, and will process down to the Upper Common by noon time. On Saturday, July 6, will be the 12th Annual Amazing Duck Race from 2:00 to 7:00 at Riverfront Park and Wally from, from the Boston Red Sox, the mascot, the Green Monster will be there from 5:00 to 5:45 p.m. And on Sunday, July 7, from 8:30 through to mid-late afternoon will be...
4 p.m.
Until when?
4 p.m.
4 p.m. So mid to late afternoon, depending on race conditions, will, will be the Long's Joe Classic. So I hope folks join us for any and all of those, those items. Any other announcements? Councilor Squallia?
Just on that note, the Long's Joe Classic, the 58th Annual, we have kids' bike races, which are free for all children from pre-K through 8th grade. Those start at 1:15. So come on down to the Long's Joe. You can register right there.
And Mayor Dina Tally?
I just wanted to say that it's not a block party, it's the block party.
That's an important distinction.
Yes.
My apologies, Mayor.
And we're anticipating the largest crowd ever. Last year was over almost 18,000 people, so we're hoping for even more than that. Come down to Main Street in Fitchburg and enjoy, and of course, the fireworks at 10 o'clock, so...
Are there going to be plenty of food?
Plenty of food, all kinds of food trucks. And the cannon, our 12-pound Napoleon cannon, all right?
So any redcoats residing in Fitchburg, beware.
Right, and we're going to be... No, I'm kidding. Four, we're going to, I think we're firing him four times. So we're going to wake everybody up.
We're up on the boulder.
So I hope everyone, wish everyone in Fitchburg a safe and happy Fourth of July. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, councilors.